I'd like to call this December 19th, 2012, a special call to the City Council meeting. The city has broken into order. Orders and indications are being given by Councilwoman Rebecca Williams.
Good morning, Father. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will grant us wisdom. Please be patient with us. Show us the right way. Be with us. Bless our citizens and bless our city council and bless our new city and God bless America. Amen.
Um, falls to order. We'll call Ms. Clark when you call the roll. Madam Clark. Madam Clark.
I can call it, Mayor.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Rebecca Williams, here. Councilwoman Jim Eyre.
Here.
Councilman Bates Masterson.
Yes. Ira. Ira. Jim Ira.
Councilman Jim Ira. And then Joe Givens.
Excellent. We pronounce him present.
How does it go?
Thank you. Um, a couple of remarks. Sorry to have shifted venues on us here. We're going to try to get it more consistent. St. Martin's wasn't available tonight, so there was some parking confusion or some direction confusion. We, you know, just, please, let's chalk it up to a brand-new city and we're working our way through things. And if that's, if we can keep going to that scale, I think we'll be doing good. But we'll work on that. Um, minutes.
Mayor, we probably would give me a draft, something minutes for the 16th.
I'm sorry, pledge. So, minutes. I've got a flag coming up. You've got to play from the P.E.E.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your holy, precious hands. One nation, under our, in the middle, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the minute.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we provided the draft copy to December 16th, 2012 minutes. The December 17th, 2012 minutes are not ready yet for your orders, but on the 2016, December 16th minutes.
Okay, so these are the December?
16th for the 10 o'clock minute.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
I still move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Couple of changes, and I sent these to Donna in an email. I'm just going to bring them down to the record. Item number six, the discussion section should read, "Councilmember Ira asks Mr. Riley to send a letter to the DeKalb County authorizing the cab to continue reviewing permit applications accepted fires at the start of the moratorium and issuing permits for the same pursuant to the DeKalb County Code. Mr. Riley agreed to do so."
Uh, just like, uh...
Yeah, you have, like I said, you have an email. Also, item number 11, I think we need to strike notify at the end of the second line and sort of negotiate with... We've authorized you to negotiate with the cab regarding certain services, not notify the cab.
Thank you.
And these were, okay, that's why. I thought these had already been put in the...
No, yeah, no, I emailed these just late this afternoon, so, but they were sent to Donna, so I make those changes.
We will make those changes and, you know, the motion has amended, we'll get those changes off the draft and have it as final call.
I move, we, uh...
The name of the sign company on the front was A.S. Penn versus A.S.I.
Okay, thank you. What one?
You want to amend your motion? If you make a motion, then with both your amendments.
You can just remind me.
So who's going to withdraw that first motion?
Then I'll withdraw it. And I'll replace it to an end with both suggestions.
By Councilman Ira.
By Councilman Ira and Councilman Givens.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter that the minutes have been accepted into the minutes. All right, um, public comment. I do have, Terrell, does you want yours to be now or the second public comment?
It doesn't matter, whatever you guys prefer.
Just go ahead and do it now.
Okay.
All right, Terrell Parsons from Ustinula 2444, Ustinula Drive, Onala, Ustinala Drive. She's got a question about vendors.
Yes, is there a list of the individual?
Please stand. We got to get you to stand and come over here.
Come over here?
Yes, ma'am, just right here. Corner, right next to J.D.
Comment, not a question.
That's a comment, right.
Is there a list of the individual vendors that bid on each RFP available to the citizens?
Can you refer that to us and we'll...
They'll refer it to council.
We'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, I'll...
In the comment section of comments, we really can't answer the question, but you can get it out there and it can be addressed right after the meeting. We're not abolishing it, just... Any more comments? Anybody else have any more comments? All right. That's it. All right, let's go on to consent agenda.
There's not a button on the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Announcements?
None from the staff, Mayor, and might be from the Mayor and Council.
I'd like to, I'd like to make one announcement. The meetings are being videotaped and they're available shortly after the meeting within a day or two on the BrookhavenPost.com. They're available unedited, basically start to finish. They're sometimes have to be broken into two or three sections just because of length, but BrookhavenPost.com has the video of the meetings if anybody's interested in looking at it once again.
Okay, um, any more announcements for anybody?
I would just invite everybody to check out our website, our city website that's up and running, looks great. Brookhaven, help me, Bob.
Okay.
D.A. dot U.S. And it's got minutes, agendas, notices of coming meetings, pictures of events, press releases, all kinds of information.
Has anybody had a chance to call City Hall yet? I know you have. All right, did you get an, did people get an answer? Somebody pick up the phone, okay? So it's 404-637-0500. All right, um, any more announcements? Okay? Any reports or presentations? Okay? Um, any old business?
Mr. Mayor, this is the, we have the second read of the two read ordinances that we had on Monday morning. Uh, is for the consideration of Mayor and Council. As you may remember, the last thing we did on Monday, I did a first read for the two reads. These are the same ordinances that you've adopted as emergency ordinances, you've adopted them as a one-read ordinance, and now this would be the time to adopt them as a two-read ordinance, which is provided by the Charter, is the methodology that you would go forward outside the 98 period. We, as we discussed previously, we wish to do it all three ways, since those are the three ways that are available, just to ensure, since there's, just to ensure that we've gotten it right, right? If I may, old business number one is ordinance 2012-12-28, consideration approval of an ordinance to provide for the continuation of ordinance in law. This is a second read.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I still move.
Is there a second? And we got to, you got to say a motion.
I, I move to approve of an ordinance to provide for the continuation of ordinance in law on second read.
And that's ordinance 2012-12-28?
That would be ordinance 2012-12-28.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter the minutes. Item one is passed.
Madam Council, item two of old business, it would be ordinance 2012-12-29, consideration approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 1 general provisions for the code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. This would be a second read.
Is there a motion on the floor?
So move to adopt ordinance 2012-12-29, approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 1 general provisions for the code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven on second read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of item two, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter the minutes. Item two is passed. Item three?
Madam Council, item three is ordinance 2012-12-30, consideration and approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 2 administration for code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven, this is second read.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I still move to approve the ordinance 2012-12-30, approve an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 2 administration for code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven on second read.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Any discussion? All in favor of ordinance, uh, item three, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter the minutes. Item three passed. Item four?
Mr. Mayor and Council, item four is ordinance 2012-12-31, consideration and approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 4 alcoholic beverages for the code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. This is a second read.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we adopt ordinance 2012-12-31, approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 4 alcoholic beverages for code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven, second read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of item four, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter the minutes. Item four is passed. Number, item five?
Mr. Mayor and Council, item five is ordinance 2012-12-32, consideration and approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 7 buildings and building regulations for code of ordinances for the second, for the city of Brookhaven on second read.
Motion on the floor?
I move to adopt ordinance 2012-12-32 for approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 7 buildings and building regulations for code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven on second read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of item five, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter. Item five is passed on the record. Item six?
Mr. Mayor and Council, item six is ordinance 2012-12-33, consideration and approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 9 municipal code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. This is a second read.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2012-12-33, approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 9 municipal court for code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven on second read.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of item six, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter. Item six on the record is passed. Item seven?
Mr. Mayor and Council, item seven is ordinance 2012-12-34, consideration and approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 10 elections for the code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. This is a second read.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Miss Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2012-12-34, approve, an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 10 elections for the code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven on second read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of item seven, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter. Item seven is passed. Item eight?
Mr. Mayor and Council, item eight is ordinance 2012-12-35, consideration and approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 15 licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations for the code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. This is a second read.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to adopt ordinance 2012-12-35, an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 15 licenses, permits, and miscellaneous business regulations for code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven on the second read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of item, this is, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter to the record that item eight is passed. Item nine?
Mr. Mayor and Council, item nine is consideration and approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 24 taxation for the code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven. This is a second read.
Is there a motion?
Miss Mayor, I move to accept ordinance 2012-12-36 for approval of an ordinance to adopt and approve Chapter 24 taxation for code of ordinances for the city of Brookhaven on second read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of item nine, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter to the record that item nine is passed. Item 10?
Mr. Mayor and Council, item 10 is an action item. This is the consideration of the Governor's Commission recommendation on contracting task order for award of public works. This is a, an item that has been tabled to this meeting, and if you desire to table it further, you can certainly do that.
Is there a motion on the floor? I move to table until later meeting. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? We're just, the discussion I would have is just let the folks know that we're considering all these bids very carefully, and that's why we're tabling. We're not, when we're ready to do it, and we feel that we're protecting the citizens of Brookhaven and the finance of the city of Brookhaven and the services, we'll move forward and make those careful decisions. So that's why we're taping it. Uh, all in favor of action item, tabling action item 10, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter to the record that item 10 has been tabled. New business?
I'm a new business, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have consideration and approval of a one-read ordinance to set and adopt fiscal year is January 1st through January 31st for the city of Brookhaven. Mr. Pike would be presenting on that.
Okay. Mr. Pike, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The ordinance before you is to establish our fiscal year according to the Charter's ordinances required to do so. I'm recommending December 31st for a couple of reasons. Mostly, it does coincide very well with the terms of the elected council. You know, you may be elected in November, you actually start on January. So your, your term, the terms of the fiscal year will coincide with the terms of your elected year. Also, for administrative purposes, it's very convenient to have the same calendar and fiscal year for tax reporting and soliciting, auditing firms, et cetera. The prices tend to be a little bit cheaper when you have a calendar year in.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Pike?
I'm just curious why so many other municipalities do it. It seems like August, August is sort of the consistent...
You see a lot of Junes. The state of Florida actually mandates that all municipalities have a September 30th year in. It's really a personal preference of the council. You can pick any day. You know, never go other than a month in, but you can pick any day that you want, but, you know, based on my recommend... There's nothing that lends itself to be more of an advantage to have a June 30th or September 30th. I, I've never seen a reason to justify that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Pike? Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2012-12-...
Does it have the little in the, do you have the next number?
27?
Yes.
Is it 37?
Mm-hmm.
Miss Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2012-12-37 and approve a one-read ordinance to set and adopt the fiscal year as January 1st through December 31st for the city of Brookhaven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Take your word for it, Chris. Okay. Cheaper, right?
There wasn't a number written on there in case you helped tape it, and I didn't want to get out of sequence.
Got you.
So when they get signed, they'll get those official numbers, but it's great to go ahead and put that in since you're going to do it ahead of time.
All right, sure. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of new business, item one, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clark, please enter to the record that new business, item one, has passed. Do I have to keep saying new business or just say item one? Okay. Um, item two?
Mr. Mayor and Council, item two is ordinance 2012-12, it would be 38 if this is for your approval. Consideration and approval of a one-read ordinance to set and adopt purchasing policy for the city of Brookhaven. Mr. Pike?
First, I want to confirm that you did receive a copy of the draft ordinance. They, they did? Okay.
Well, I got a copy here.
Okay, so you do have, okay, I did, as much as I liked my handiwork, I would never ask you to approve this without reading it. If you have not had a chance to read it, then I would certainly recommend referring this. So if you've had a chance to look over it, I'll be glad to kind of go through some of the highlights and...
Well, I don't know that we've all read this, but once you go through some of the highlights though, when we do read it...
Sure, I'll be glad to. What I, what I've done is I've taken policies from surrounding areas as well as best practices identified by the National Institute of Government Procurement. Yes, there is such an agency. And looked at those best practices and incorporated those into a consolidated document that staff and administration will utilize to procure goods and services going forward. The significant element in here that you will want to consider, you know, there's a lot of best practices I would not recommend going anywhere but in here, but the one where I would say you want to discuss it and come to an agreement on is the discretionary level for contracting you want to best in the city manager. Long-term, you do not want to be, you don't want to have every contract come before you, $10 contract, $15 contract. At some level, you want the city manager to have discretion to execute such contracts so you can focus on the larger, more important issues.
What is a example in the city of Demo, you know, what is their managers?
Demo uses $50,000. I have included that figure in here.
Does DeKalb use $50,000 too?
I'm not sure. DeKalb has a much larger budget, and I think they may have 100, but I'm not positive.
I think it's 50 or so. We were seeing something in the paper about them, a bunch of $49,000 approvals or something in a row.
Those don't have to be bid. Anything under 50 doesn't have to be...
Anything under 50 doesn't have to be bid. That's not what we're talking about, we're just talking about...
There's similar language in here as to what threshold you'll have a formal solicitation process as well. And again, for the same reason, it can be very costly, as you can see going through these, the service contractors you're looking at now. It can be very time-consuming and costly to go through a formal solicitation process. So you don't want to do that for smaller contracted values.
Lee, do you have any comment on that?
I agree with that, and that's been my practice.
$50,000?
$50,000 is customary.
For both, for both an RFP process and a discretionary?
Now, that's always followed up with the city manager informing the mayor and council that that's been done and...
Is that part of the rule? After you do it?
That's always been my practice, and with other cities, I've always had like a 72-hour period from which I announced that if you all had a problem, you'd have an opportunity to stop the pen.
That may be your policy. Is that stated in here as a practice to follow?
Yeah, that would be following, yeah.
No, but you can certainly direct your city manager any kind of information you want to have brought to you.
But it couldn't be in the purchasing policy, wouldn't have a three-day window or something?
Absolutely. You could easily do that.
Could you, I don't know, could you insert that just so we consider that?
Yes, yes.
All right. We all be comfortable. It's a chain of any time, Mayor.
But I just, I think that we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner. If there is an item that requires quick action from a, from a city manager, they need to do it quickly. It's time-sensitive and they can't buy...
Which is three days afterward.
Well, it's up to three days. You have up to three days to comment, and you could do it as soon as the manager notified you.
Yeah.
And it would be the manager's responsibility if they, we've got an issue here. I mean, it may be an ice, icing or snow, or you might want to bring in extra contractors to...
And Councilman Mattson, there is provisions in here for emergency procurement, in which case the city manager would verbally go to by the mayor, give verbal concurrence for a contract that will be later ratified by council. So there is that dual check and balance that's put in place for emergency types. Is that also capped at $50,000 or is it... No, emergency, emergency is emergency. If you need it, then it doesn't matter how much it is, but it would require that communication to the mayor or the mayor approach, you have mayor's out-of-pocket.
It just seems to me that 50,000 is kind of a high number for a city that has a potential budget of like 25 million. DeKalb County has a budget of 650 million, and so 50,000 is probably okay to them. I also know that...
It's 0.02% of the budget, so...
Of our budget?
Yeah. So it's a, it's a small amount.
Well, it's a small part. Well, I guess the abuse that you sometimes see on the bidding part is that then a lot of bids go out for 49, 995, you know?
And if you have a 25 threshold, you're going to have cases where you have a $24,000 bid come in as well. You know, what, any level that you set at that, the, the real issue there is how, at what point do you want to say, this is not a policy decision, this is more an operational decision? It's our will to set policy, and a $50,000 contract is the minimum level that we're going to consider a policy issue for. Again, it's all personal preference. My recommendation is the 50. It's served other communities well.
Do you know of any other communities with a different threshold or lower threshold?
They're all over. They're, in the city of Griffin, which was my last finance director role starting in 2003, they had some trust issues with an outgoing city manager. So in my opinion, it was a knee-jerk reaction, but they said, we want to see every single contract. So if a copier maintenance guy came in and said, we needed to do a certain repair and I've got to sign some paperwork, we had to wait for it to go to council. I think that was a little overreacting, but it's anywhere from zero on up to, you know, as of 60-year.
Bill, how quickly could we change his policy if we developed a trust issue with Murray? I mean, how could we change that quickly?
What?
You've got, you can do a one-read ordinance for the first 90 days, so you call it, you call it emergency meeting, we could be here and now.
Okay, okay.
But let me make sure I understand what Marie was suggesting is that you get any contract you get, you would notify us.
That's my practice. I think it's always good to inform the mayor and council. Sometimes your community will know before you do when a contract is issued, and you don't want to be stopped in the grocery store saying, hey, what's going on with ABC? Because I don't know. Tell me.
I, I think we're just really interested in the transparency of it and just the openness of it. So if that is built into the process, I'm happy with that.
That if you would like to go ahead and do that, you can agree to approve this with that amendment, and then we can incorporate it and include that change.
What's your timeframe on this?
We've, we've got some smaller purchases, like, you know, copiers and, you know, some very small equipment that we do need to go ahead and get started. I would, I would like to have something in place, but, I mean, we're talking three-digit like to have something in place, uh, but, I mean, we're talking three-digit contracts, not, not fifty thousand.
Can it wait till Friday?
It can wait till Friday, absolutely.
Yeah, Bill's going to be back by now, are we holding anything up? You got some pencils, some pens.
We're, we're bringing our own, sir.
Thank you. Pins and paper and pads have been donated.
Yeah, well, just, uh, just, this is because we want to do the bill as a matter of thing, we'll keep our tradition up, but we've started making sure we do everything, read everything before.
And if you have sample language that sort of documents what you were talking about, if you just email, don't, don't need it necessarily included, just email to us so we can...
Okay.
Read it, and then, you know, we'll understand that goes together with this.
Okay.
But would it be, I mean, wouldn't it be prudent to have that policy in the purchasing?
Oh, yeah, your, your, your Friday package includes that amendment.
But I'm just saying, in, in, for the sake of time, but she's got something...
Stick it into the purchasing policy.
Either way, yeah.
As, we're going to have it as all together.
Do you want it embedded in the body of the ordinance, so on Friday you can take a look at it, and we'll point that out to you, okay?
Any other comments or questions?
And whatever that verbiage is there, you could just send it to us before it actually gets into, we're privileged to...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Is there a motion, Mr. Mayor, on this?
I still move, I'll, I move to table, uh, the motion for, uh, approval of the purchasing policy until Friday.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of item, this is two, what, four?
Two.
Two.
Please signify so by saying, there it is, I lost my page, please signify so by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Item first, please enter on the record, but item two has passed. Item three?
Mayor and Council, item three of new business is, uh, consideration and approval of ordinance to set and adopt the fiscal year, January first, uh, December thirty-first for the city of Brookhaven, this is a first read.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Mayor, this is all, this is a first read on this one, this is your two read of the same one you just passed on the one-read motion, so we'll, we'll bring this one back to you on Friday also.
Okay, so it has to, has to wait, okay. Item four?
Mayor and Council, this is a consideration and approval of an ordinance to set and adopt the purchasing policy for the city of Brookhaven, this is a first read, here again, this is your two-read version of the one-read that you just tabled Friday, and we can bring them both back to you on that day.
Action item, go ahead.
Is there anything that would prohibit them from going ahead and doing the first read, and then Friday they could do the emergency adoption and the second read?
That's what I'm doing right here.
Okay.
Okay, that's, so...
This is a first read.
Uh, action item five?
Uh, Mayor and Council, this is to ratify my, the activity that I explained to you on Monday, to, uh, go forward and notify the, uh, the county on all of the, uh... The, uh, that we were going to, as well as community development, that we were, that we were going to do, take over business licenses, alcohol licenses, other regulated licensing uh, under Chapter Fifteen as a code of ordinances, uh, and is, that's the, uh...
Can you, can you hold one second, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're on this, we have amended the minutes.
No, no, this is, it's the same.
Are we on it?
Round five.
Round five of new business, action item.
Different, different letter.
That's a different letter.
Yeah, a different letter.
Different letter. This is, this is the one we discussed on Monday at the ribbon cutting, that I wanted to add the, uh, business licenses and the alcohol licenses, because we didn't have it in, into the, uh, into the minutes on our, our Sunday night meeting, I added those, changed the letters directed by Councilmember Chase, and, uh, and I took it over to Mr. Stodner, we had a good discussion on, on, uh, Monday afternoon, it's been about thirty minutes, we had, uh, had the, the question about the, uh, alcohol license, and Mr. Stodner took me over to Mr. Gottlieb, who's the, the Director of Finance, uh, he said that he would go back, change and make sure that nothing was going wrong, and we've done that, I have out, I've outreached to Mr. Cornell, but I have not been able to have a meeting with him as of this point on that, on the items that we talked about on the letter, but I'm going, uh, we have been monitoring that there's no problems that have occurred in, on any front at this point in time, and Mr. Stodner is, uh, diligent in helping us get through this, and, uh, so it, I thought, I felt it was a very productive meeting to be able to carry the letter, discuss the letter, discuss how the transition was going, and make sure that, as Councilmember Williams described, that there could be no misunderstanding of where we were going and what we were going to take, and, uh, so I think we came to it of not only getting written notice, but we went through it all and make sure we had our understanding back and forth of what, what, where we are and how we're moving forward. So if you, I appreciate a motion to ratify my actions, since I've, I've already done
Is it appropriate at this time to explain just what this means, because I think there's been confusion on the way we should do this, we do that after we vote.
Certainly, I could, it, it's questions, I can certainly explain these letters and what they mean as part of my presentation too, so it can be, it'd be appropriate if you want me to.
If you would just clarify, especially for, for the record and for our citizens, where we are with approving licenses, uh, with DeKalb County and the city of Brookhaven.
Yes, ma'am. The, uh, well, if we can start with the, the business licenses and mountain hall licenses, which is, which is probably the, the, the whole water front, uh, for most people. The, there, the moratorium is in place for us, and the moratorium is in place for the county, we have parallel moratoriums, the moratorium that the county drafted and required us to adopt the same one, uh, included a provision that the county would continue to, uh, allow those persons and entities who already had alcohol licenses and already had business licenses to come in and renew for two thousand and thirteen, even pending, uh, notwithstanding that there's a moratorium in place. What that means for, uh, restaurants is that if they fail to go ahead and get their two thousand and thirteen license by, by the time, date of the moratorium, we have to box them out of being able to have their license for two thousand and thirteen and to be open on New Year's Day, and be able to get, go, get, uh, have, have the wholesalers deliver to them because they don't have a new license. They can still go down to DeKalb County, just as they did last year, make an application for their two thousand and thirteen renewal, and get their two thousand and thirteen license. They get a two thousand and thirteen license from the county that will hold them in good stead all the way till two thousand and fourteen, when we will be, we will issue that license to them.